Okay, we're gonna call the July 21st, 2021 Mashpee Public Schools Business Meeting to order. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands on the nation under God, with its self-reliability and justice.
We're setting records tonight, people. It's hot in here. Okay. Ratify, we're first, if we're gonna ratify the agenda for tonight? Are there any changes or questions anybody has about tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to ratify the agenda as presented for tonight.
So, motion by Kathy, a second by Dawn. Any discussion? Okay, Brian, I'm gonna call on you first.
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes.
And Dawn.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So, tonight's agenda is ratified. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
There is nothing in the chat at this time.
And there's nothing here, I noticed. So, I think we're good. So, that puts us to you, Roxanne. Nice to see you. Your update is next.
Good evening, Seth. Nice to see all of you. Thank you for having us on the agenda again today. First of all, I would like to extend a congratulations and an acknowledgement for Superintendent DeBoer's receiving the President's Award from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And we're really pleased, and nobody could be more deserving than Patty. So, congratulations from the tribe as well as the Education Department specifically. I'd also like to extend a thank you to Nicole Bartlett for her work as the school committee liaison to the tribe and beyond. And it's overwhelming, the thanks and gratitude that we feel because you've opened so many doors for us as a tribal education agency. I'd like to extend an invitation to Nicole, as well as Kathy Lewis, the new liaison, to attend our Voices of the First Light Conference on August 18th, excuse me, on August 18th at the Tribal Community and Government Center. And you'll be there as one of our guests, and I'm assuming you're not registered probably. So, we'd like, we'd love to see you there, be able to acknowledge the work that you've done. I just, I kinda have some highlights I just wanna review. We had to submit an annual performance report at the end of May, even though we've only been in existence since October of 2020. But some of the highlights are the work that we've done with Falmouth as a result of Nicole opening some of the doors through a regional school board association. We actually did a presentation for them in January, which led to the Education Department putting a team together comprised of Natahna, Linda Combs, Kitty Hendricks, and Darius Combs, actually Jerry Lassos, the four of them, to provide an educational session for the Falmouth School Committee on Land Acknowledgements. And we didn't want to go in there trying to approve what their land acknowledgement draft was gonna be. Rather than that, we went in to educate and bring to light some of the some of the place names around Falmouth where our people lived, worked, and found their sustenance. And from that, a subgroup or learning community developed. And with the work with the four teammates from the Education Department, Falmouth School Committee adopted a land acknowledgement. And again, we're so pleased because Mashpee set the example. And now the town of Falmouth is considering a land acknowledgement. It's been placed on hold because there was some fear that if they acknowledged that they are on indigenous lands, that the tribe might try to come in and claim those lands or want reparations for those lands. So, it's a little bit exciting. We're creating some movement, I think. We all know about the Magna Award that Mashpee received from the National School Board Association. Well deserved. Native teacher recruitment, I actually was able to introduce a native, a recent native graduate, actually Nelson Andrews' niece, to Patty. And I think maybe she will be looking at possibly substituting and/or working as a teacher assistant, is my understanding at the Quashnet School. So, we'll look forward to good things to come, and she is working on a master's degree in special education and elementary education. Right now, she's working in our supplemental instruction program at the Tribal Government Center. A very nice young woman. Equity and access, we have Jerry Lassos working with both the grades three through six social studies teams, as well as the civics and history departments in Falmouth. So, he's working with Mashpee grades three through six with the history department, as well as Mike Feeney at Falmouth. What the Education Department has done is provided native landmark court cases, as well as legal breaks and writings to the instructors and chairpeople of these departments, with the expectation that the study will be a little more global than just looking at it so narrowly as United States law or United States history without the contents of other aspects of the history that went along with it. Education, we coordinated with Mary Kate at Quashnet School to recruit students grades four through six for the supplemental academic program. I think about 35 letters went out to parents recruiting students. Now, we know some of those students of that age range are attending and preserving our homelands camp with Kitty. However, right now, we only have four students, and we had wanted 12 to 15. We know there's a lot more children that are sitting at home. So, every time I encounter parents with kids that age, I'm recruiting. And for anybody that's outside of those grades, we welcome the inquiry because we're all about the education and the supporting of the learning loss and those that may be academically behind or want to be, you know, academically on grade level or beyond. Data sharing, the Education Department worked with Patty to develop a parent consent form. Those parents gave consent for the Tribal Education Department to share in the student's school data. And last spring, we received, I think, about 21 students in the database classroom. So, we're hoping, again, that that letter goes out to parents at the beginning of the school year. And we will have better footing to be able to work within the parameters of that classroom and hopefully work more closely with the buildings and the department principals. Okay, I don't wanna go on too long. We did present at a workshop yesterday, the Educating All Cape Cod Children, Celebrating the Mosaic. Our presentation was entitled "Systemic Challenges: Resiliency and Perseverance, the Education of Mashpee Wampanoag Youth." It was a virtual conference. I think there was about 192, 195 participants, according to what was shown on the screen. It was very well attended, and the presentations were very informative. And I learned a lot. I got to take some notes that will, I think, assist us in the work that we do. What we tried to do was reveal who we are as a people and some of the challenges we face as native people within the education system and outside of the education system. And some of those experiences parallel the experiences of those from other minority cultures. So, it was a great conference. And as all of you know, we have Voices of the First Light, a one-day conference scheduled for August 18th in our Tribal and Community Center, Tribal Community and Government Center. Thirty educators registered, mainly from the Mashpee District, we're most appreciative. And we have about 10 to 12 invited guests that we hope will be able to attend. We actually partnered with the Collaborative Educational Services in Massachusetts, and it's a group that helped us to assign the PDPs for those workshops. And they'll be there to help us with the registration and the technical aspects of the conference. Very exciting, and this will be the first of many. So, I think, I just, I'll jump to the revelations for advocacy. And I know I shared this with Patty and Jamie. We have a great number of young males with IEPs, and we've worked with them to assist them and to advocate for their educational benefits and rights, mainly with grandparents. And these are, again, young males in high school, looking towards graduation. And it occurred to us through a number of different events and activities that we've also participated in, that the tribe as a whole completely neglects early intervention, child find, and really getting in on the ground floor when our kids are identified. So, we hope to maybe work with JB and get some professional development on how best we can, well, first of all, on idea, and then, second of all, how best we can position ourselves to work with the school and families at the ground floor so we can provide those supports for our children with IEPs. And then, lastly, I think we, as the Tribal Education Department, need to be more resourceful, a little more interested and a little more proactive in really learning about the LEAs, especially Mashpee, Falmouth, and Wampanoag. We need to know schedules. We need to know kind of what's going on during the school year. And really, I think, try to work within that system to hold some of our supplemental activities. It would seem to me that it would benefit our kids more if they can participate in those activities in the system where they spend majority of their time, a majority of the year. And so, we'll work with Mashpee School District and Patty on seeing how we can do more activities within the school setting itself and not segregate continuously those cultural and learning activities that we currently set aside or bring outside the system. And with that, I wanna just thank you for a good school year and a great start with our partnership. And I look forward to the future. So, Katavatano.
Can I add just two things, Roxanne? Is that okay? This is chairperson.
Yep.
I wanted to say, first of all, that the Educating All Cape students, the Mosaic, that conference, most, all of us, I think, who are here, the principals, Dr. Curley, Ashley Loeks, our business manager, I, we were lucky enough to be on it for both days. And so, Roxanne, I just wanted to congratulate you and your team. I thought you did a wonderful job. It was great that the audience was broader than just Mashpee. And I was really excited for them to hear and then learn about the great stuff you're doing and sort of our partnership. So, I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for that because it was, that whole experience, we're both days, were really wonderful. And I feel grateful to have been there. And then, secondly, just to say, yes, we will send those letters out in September to get the data sharing going. So, I wanted to just give you the yes on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to hear. It was a great conference. Thank you, all of you.
Sure. Thank you.
Kathy, or Dawn, or Brian, do you guys have any questions for Roxanne?
No, thank you for the update. Great to hear all the exciting things happen.
Thank you. Dawn?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. It's great to have all this information. You know what I would love, Roxanne, is I, it doesn't have to be a part of the packet, but since you always prepare for these meetings, it would be nice if the committee could get that information either sent afterwards is fine. But that way, I can push some of that out through, you know, the Division VII groups and just make more people, because your updates are broader than just Mashpee, you know, but they're impacting native students. And I think this is probably the only place on Cape Cod where that happens, at every school committee meeting. So, I think we should maybe find a way to get that information out. I also, I did bring a copy of that land acknowledgement that Falmouth passed. I was gonna push it out to the committee, but would you like me to read it? Okay. So, as, so this was shared with me by Natalie, the Falmouth Chair. "Falmouth School Committee acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag or Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Secaneset, Wacoit, Sippewesset, Taca Tep, and Chapacoit." Did I say that right? "As original stewards of what is now known as the town of Falmouth and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment of the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation." Congratulations. I think it's wonderful. And please convey my appreciation to Natahna and that team for, I heard nothing but great things from Falmouth. And that we had something to do with that is just remarkable. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything. Brian, did you have anything to add?
No, Katavatosh Roxanne and everyone, for the work that you guys have done.
Great. Are you gonna be sticking around, Roxanne, or do you have to go?
I was gonna go.
Okay.
Because we did stuff going on.
I'll email you about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye, Roxanne. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 16th meeting. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at those. Are there any edits or anything we need to?
There's one, like, little grammar kind of thing on number eight. There's, like, an extra set of quotes.
Oh, unsung heroes. Okay. Marie is here. She can get that correction. Anything else? I like these notes. You can actually, like, see what happened. So, thank you, Marie. I'll take a motion to approve. Anyone?
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
The minutes of June 16th, 2021, with the man.
Thanks, Dawn. So, motion from Dawn, second from Kathy. Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Brian, how do you vote?
Upstain.
Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, those minutes are approved. So, in the time I've been on the school committee, I don't know about you, Dawn. Have we ever convened a school committee meeting without the superintendent? She is taking vacation tonight, and I am so impressed and so glad. I'm, I guess she's gonna watch the recording. I mean, she's not even zooming in. I'm so impressed.
I don't think she's gonna need to watch the recording, to be frank.
Yes, exactly. Well, anyway, so in her stead tonight, we have our very capable assistant superintendent providing the next item, which is the report of the superintendent.
So, I'll do my best. I will say, in the time that I have not only worked in Mashpee but lived in Mashpee, I have never seen a report of the superintendent section be so small on the agenda. So, I don't know if I should take that personally or just be very grateful and say thank you. I'm only going to talk about one thing, and then we have Christine Master Giacomo, who is our Genius Academy Coordinator, who's gonna just very quickly walk you through what's going on at Genius Academy. And my piece is Communication and Acknowledgements. But as I said to Mrs. Bartlett, I have no interest in reading to you folks. You can read the lovely letters that are in your packet. The first one is from the Cape and Islands Mass Hire Workforce Board, where we were awarded $5,000 one-time stipend as part of the work that we do with Cara Galvin and the workforce board. So, that's very exciting. And then, the second one, I am gonna read a little bit of it to you. There is a letter that was received from Chuck and Debbie Gazer, and it was to Lucinda McKay, who just recently retired from the Quashnet School, and they had volunteered in her class over the years. So, it's a lovely letter. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but there's this one paragraph that I think everyone, you know, in our viewing public should hear. So, here we go. "I have always maintained that the success of a town is, in some large measure, a function of the impression its residents, in particular, have of the town's school system. In the 20-plus years we have lived in Mashpee, I have seen tremendous improvements both academically and in the administration of the school district. I personally give high marks to the Board of Education, but I give my highest marks to the leadership and community-mindedness of Superintendent Patty DeBoer. She was the Quashnet principal during my years with you, working with this teacher. But from an interested but outside observer, as the superintendent, she has done an outstanding job putting together competent, concerned, and professional academic and administrative teams which have improved the standing and the perception of the school district, both in Mashpee and on Cape Cod. And now I know why Mrs. DeBoer did not come to this meeting tonight because she didn't wanna necessarily read that about herself, and I am certainly proud to do so." So, those were two pieces of great news, and I don't know if anyone had any questions?
No, that's nice of them to write. I love it when people do that.
And it's very true, too. She's amazing. We are so lucky to have her. So, the next piece will be then Mrs. Master Giacomo, who you have a packet or a handbook on your page, on your desks, that looks like this. Brian, you don't, but we can email it to you if you like. I can do that right now. Does that work?
Oh, we're not gonna show the presentation on the Zoom?
No. Do you need one, Christine?
No, but sure.
We can't. I, that's too much.
Know your limits, just saying.
All right. So, Mr. DeBoer, invite me here just for a quick share out. We are at the very beginning of the program. We're only on day five of the program. So, there's only so much to share out so far. But I can speak to, you know, what we're doing and why. So, the Mashpee Genius Academy, it was started mostly in order to get students excited about learning again. So, it's an enrichment program over the summer. It's not necessarily math or writing remediation. It's more so student-driven and project-based learning. So, we focus entirely on having the students at the stage for what they would like to learn about. So, teachers are more facilitators, and it's really student-driven. So, I put in the packet what we'll be working on week to week in terms of our weekly themes, but it's focused on a Genius Hour format. So, a format that was actually created by Google, the business Google. They use it in their own time for their employees. It's also referred to as Passion Projects or 20 Time in different classrooms. But the idea is simply that Google gave their employees 20% of their time to work on projects of their choice, that of course benefited Google's business. And during that time, their employees really were productive and creative and innovative. And that's how Gmail was created, actually. So, we're doing the same thing. At Genius Academy, we're allowing students to choose what they are learning about, and they're coming up with some really interesting topics. Like I mentioned, we're only at the beginning, so not all students have chosen their topics yet. But we have students learning to play the piano, learning how to paint in watercolors. We have a group of boys who really want to learn how to bake a cake from scratch. So, just some really interesting topics that they've chosen so far. In the packets, I put some pictures from the classrooms because the students are more exciting than I am. So, I'm sure you'll wanna look at those. We've also been able to incorporate some field trips. The first and second grade cluster went down to the Cape Cod Canal, and they had a hands-on experience there where they will learn, where they were able to learn not only about ocean life and whatnot, but also about the function of the canal as an innovative idea in itself. So, it's been great so far, and we have some exciting things that we're looking forward to as well. We're doing a virtual field trip with a cranberry farmer just tomorrow, actually. And we're also taking all the groups over to the Mashpee Public Library so that they can check out some research materials about whichever topics each student chooses. And the librarian there has been so fabulous working with us that she's going to have ready for the students their own library cards for any students who don't already have them, to try to foster that relationship and get kids to the library more. So, same things.
So, can I add just two things? The first one is, so this idea really came out of countering the narrative of learning loss that we hear in the newspaper or on TV about our kids have lost all this learning. Our kids have not. Our kids are doing okay. They're doing great, actually. But we do need to re-engage them. We need them to see value in school and what they can get out of it. So, the Genius model was chosen very specifically to re-engage kids and help them remember how cool it is. That's one. And two, I just did wanna say, part of it is remediation for those who need it or acceleration for those who need it because the teachers as facilitators are working on their, on kids decoding skills, on their math and reasoning skills and critical thinking and all of the components of our Portrait of a Graduate. They're working on through this process. And kids are coming out of it, the research tells us, better, further along in those basic foundational skills than they would in a more typical sort of drill, I don't wanna say drill and kill because that's, but it's really what it is, model. So, and Christine has been amazing, amazing at leading this process. She is just, you come up with just one thought, and she runs with it and has ideas that are just amazing. And it's really, we can really attribute our success to her leadership and the teachers and kids that we have in the program. So, I just wanna publicly say thank you, Christine. She's dealt with facility issues. She's dealt with, like, so many things, and she's doing it with grace and, and very effectively. So.
Thanks.
Now, if you guys, if you all have questions, feel free to go for it.
I have one question. How many students do we have? Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Wow. Just a reminder, we're providing transportation to and from for any student who needs it, along with snacks, which is very popular. Of course it is. All the materials, everything, the field trips, all of that is covered.
It's been really wonderful, actually. A student just yesterday said to me, "I really want to try drawing out this idea, but I don't have a sketchbook." It was. Okay. Let's, you know, there's, there isn't that barrier of the no or that's not on the plan, or you're interested in it. Let's find a way. It's working. It's great.
Dawn, did you have something, a question?
So, I'm just trying to compare and contrast this format versus the traditional format, which has been utilized in the past. And, you know, do you envision that this is now breaking new ground? That we would continue to use a standard Genius format going forward?
Dawn, may I clarify? Are you asking compared to Camp Falcon?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think Christine would have that answer. And I don't think it's, I think it's too early to determine that this would be the way we'd go from here on out or if it would go back to Camp Falcon. I think part of ESER is, ESER III in particular, is related to summer programming. I will say, too, it's not on the agenda, but we did write for- I will say, too, it's not on the agenda, but we did write for and receive funding to do an Acceleration Academy the week before school starts for grades K1 and 2 in ELA. That will look more traditional. That is a DESI-driven program. But in terms of what we do next summer and summers, I think we're gonna have to evaluate this program, survey families, survey kids, and then see what the needs are. That would be my very preliminary answer.
Do you mind if I add something?
Yeah, please.
I was just going to add that there are also other programs going on over the summertime as well. So it definitely fits a certain need. It certainly doesn't cover all needs that there are, but there are other programs running in conjunction, too.
The ESY program is running as well.
What does ESY stand for?
Extended School Year, and it's for individuals on IEPs whose teams have determined that they require an extended school year to ensure that they don't have substantial regression over the summer. But it's disability-related. It's weird not having a mask on, I'm not gonna lie. Like, I'm like, am I yelling? Is it too loud? Brian, tell me, is it too loud?
And this is all taking place up at the middle high school?
Yes.
Are you using the whole building or just the middle side, or what do you?
We're all in one wing.
One wing.
So we took over one.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Air conditioning is the driving force behind that?
Nice.
Yes.
That's great. So are you having any regrets about giving up some of your free time this summer to work?
No, I'm not, I'm not, actually. My kids are enrolled in the program, too.
Oh, awesome.
And they're loving it also, so we just don't go together. It's just part of our summer experience. It's honestly a really fun program, so I don't feel like I'm giving up my summer.
And it's 12:15, which is, you know.
Yeah, it's in the mornings, right?
Yeah.
Kids still go to the beach after. Well, thank you so much. It sounds like a great opportunity for our students, and I love the, I love the different, you know, it's funny, I was sitting at that light, and it must have, I saw a bus full of our kids go by sometime this week, and I was like, I wonder where they are going.
Skip, guide, get out.
Yeah, that must be what it was. Kathy, did you have any questions?
Nope.
Alright, Brian, anything? Alright, great, thank you so much for coming.
Of course, no problem. Thanks, Christine. See you in the morning. Oh, don't go that way, essentially.
I was just giving Kathy. Thanks.
Alright, so that takes us to our report from our Director of Finance, Ashley.
In your packets, an update for FY21. We're still in the process of closing out, so I don't have a final number for you due to the year, but this is as of July 15th. It includes the general fund, our grants and revolving accounts, full-choice information, then also code research measures. Are there any questions?
Are we still about where we thought we'd be?
Yes, there is a little movement. We might have a little bit more left over, but I'll have a better understanding at the end of the month, and then I'll be able to share out the next school committee meeting or at our retreat.
When will money be returned to the town?
August.
August, okay. After our meeting or before? I don't like this talking to people behind me. When do we get to circle the tables up again?
When the real superintendent's back. Talk to her. I'm not making any changes.
So our formal close process, we have to provide all the information to the town on Friday. The town is gonna continue their close, so there'll be some cleanup. I would say sometime between Friday and our next meeting will probably happen. I can go give you better information once I have it.
Okay. I was just curious on the timing. Alright, any questions for Ashley on the closeout? Alright, go ahead.
FY22, we have just started the year. We're 21 days in. We're in the process of setting up our year-long inferences, buying everything we need to start school. Everything is on track today. The next part I have is just one final FY21 budget transfer.
So are you moving money from FY, what am I looking for?
This is within FY21. It's just the final cleanup. We have some accounts that were in deficit from our spending.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I'm on the wrong sheet. What page is this in?
Third grade.
Sorry.
Third grade to thirty-seven.
I'm behind.
So does this transfer also take into consideration movement of money, if necessary, for the merit?
A little bit of it, yes. We did most of it in the last school committee meeting, but there was just a little cleanup. As you can see, there's a dollar here or there for some of the accounts, and that's just to make sure none of the accounts are in deficit.
But that's not related to the merit payment that was made, correct?
Can you just speak up a little?
It's really hard to hear you.
That's not related to the merit payment that was made, correct?
It was a dollar, like, for, so for instance.
A dollar?
Yes, so nothing major, no.
Alright. What happened to a mask?
You don't need it if you don't have a mask, Mr. Myers.
Well, we might make an exception for Dawn.
I asked him over there if he needed it, for real.
Just project on.
Yeah, jax. You know, you can do that at the retreat. I was a theater major, I can teach you all how to use your vocal instrument.
If he wants a microphone, he can use one, though.
Do you really want one now?
We have a, we need one. Okay, so can I get a motion on the budget transfers? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
Is that good enough fashion?
For $226,921.65.
Alright, we have a motion by Kathy.
Second, Brian.
Second by Brian, thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, Brian, how would you vote?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Ashley. Alright, so next on the agenda is our reports from our subcommittees, liaisons, working groups, all the stuff we do in our free time. And I understand the outreach working group, Matt?
We did. Brian, you wanna take it, or you want me to take it? It's up to you.
Oh, I can take it.
Okay, so basically, we met for the proposal for the upcoming National School Board Association. Basically, we're submitting a proposal to present at the 2022 convention about becoming a connected community. Kind of Patty and Nicole, I believe, had worked on kind of this a little bit and presented it to us. We went through a little wordsmithing. But basically, it's so that we can go and kind of explain how we've created a connected community here in Mashpee. So that was kind of what we did and talked about, and it seemed like a good idea, and so we're moving forward with it. And yeah, we have questions.
Yeah, Dawn, we'll make sure that you get a chance, we're just iterating it in a Google Doc. It's due July 30th right now. I'm glad that you guys had a chance to discuss it. I mean, I think that we, my goal with, you know, I feel like NSBA is an opportunity to make sure that Mashpee isn't the best-kept secret in Massachusetts, much less, you know, the country. I wanna let people know what we're up to here, and I felt like the, I originally thought about We Are Mashpee as a really special, sort of interesting, innovative way to do outreach in the district, and that benefited from a lot of the work that Patty, all the groundwork that Patty has laid and these different partnerships in our community. And it was really Patty's idea to kind of broaden it and make it more about, you know, sort of our collective outreach strategy. So we have to get selected. I mean, it's a competitive process, but it will be a like 75-minute session at the annual conference if we get approved, I guess.
And I don't know when we'll find out.
I, that was one of my questions to you, so, because I don't know that we discussed that at that meeting. I don't know.
No, I don't think it's listed on the website either.
Yeah, so I figured we'll find out when we find out.
Just having been on the PD Committee for a program like this, it often is, they don't tell you when, no, no, because they don't know how many they're gonna get, and they don't wanna tie themselves to a date in terms of reading. But usually, it's at least a couple of months, a few months in the process. Especially because this is a national and you have to travel. If it's due July 30th, it'd be probably here in the fall, for sure.
Right.
It's April, yeah.
Yeah, I would say by the fall.
So anyway, very exciting, considering when I started on this committee, we didn't even have an outreach coordinator. I'm very.
It is exciting.
Yeah, and I'm glad you were supportive. I was kind of, you're our communications chops person, so this is right up your alley.
Nope, excellent. I was very excited to see it.
And so was there anything else from that week working group?
That was pretty much it. We just focused on that, kind of ran through it, went over the pieces, edited a few things down, you know, there was nothing major, earth-shattering changes made to it. It was just kind of making it a little bit more concise and trying to really hone that focus in to make it something that the NSBA would be interested in letting us present to the greater population of school board members.
Yeah, great.
I do have a question, and I guess just from a protocol perspective. I'm supportive of, but hearing about it as it's being submitted doesn't really give the committee, other committee members, an opportunity to participate in the, in this? And so I'll put it to the Chair. What should be, what should be the protocol in regard to initiatives such as this that clearly do take time and resources, one of the committee members, but also, more importantly, of the superintendent and staff?
Well, I think as we're all members of NSPA and MASK, we have the opportunity to independently submit proposals to any of these conferences. You know, certainly socialize it with the group or whatever, but I think the protocol is typically that a school board member approaches the superintendent and see if she thinks that this is a worthwhile exercise. And so I think it's not that the school committee necessarily has purview over whether we submit a proposal, but it is an opportunity through our membership of the National School Board Association to, you know, share information about what's going on in Mashpee, so.
Hold on a minute, you're saying a school board member could take the initiative to do something that may contradict me to other members?
No, I'm saying that they could approach the superintendent with an idea.
Right.
And then it gets socialized throughout the committee and with the superintendent at her discretion, I would assume. I mean, I, the superintendent is, I don't think the board really gets to submit something on behalf of the district. It's really gotta be the superintendent.
I think you're missing that point.
I think what he's saying is, like, should it be discussed to go to the superintendent before? Because that was presented as like completed and just kind of a review, which I, like, I didn't take issue with personally, because, like Nicole said, I think, you know, any of us could do that, like, that was my understanding. So I was kind of like, okay, this is all set, but I think what, to his point is, should there be a preliminary discussion of, hey, I saw this, can I submit it? What do you guys think? Should we move forward with it? Is that correct, Dawn?
I mean, this is a committee versus, you know, each of us individually have really no powers, the power of the committee, right?
And I clarify just one point, though, to make sure it's clear, it is not ready for submission. I wanna make sure my hand is anywhere on it, that it's very clear, that it is not ready for submission.
No, and that's not.
So that's not the protocol question, I get that, but I didn't want you to think it was ready to go. So it's, this probably is the opportunity to have that conversation, would be my feeling.
Yeah, it wasn't, and if I misspoke, I apologize.
No, it was, it was not misspoke. I just wanted to make sure it's clear, it's not done.
It was a preliminary pass at, this is what, you know, this proposal was brought to Patty, and let's go over it, what do you guys think? And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that was how I took the meeting, was here's what we're looking to do, what do you guys think of what we've got so far? Should we move forward with it? And then come to this meeting to discuss.
Yeah, I would amend that slightly to say that we thought there was an early July deadline.
That also.
And so I reached out to Patty and said, hey, what do you think about submitting something about We Are Mashpee? She connect, she wanted to, connected with Consuelo, and so this meeting is really the opportu, because it turned out that the deadline wasn't imminent. It wasn't till the end of July. And so this meeting was gonna be that opportunity to socialize it with the committee. It just, there was a flurry of activity because we thought there was an earlier deadline, and then we would have sent it out to the committee sort of virtually. But I think now it's kind of ready for the full committee's review.
I would say yes. Close.
Yeah.
The concept is ready.
Yeah, yeah. Brian?
Yeah, no, I would agree, and I mean, I understand, you know, one of the newest members here, but in regards to protocol, I mean, I would assume that the proper protocol was followed. I mean, when we're on subcommittees, our job is to report back to the entire group, and that's what Kathy and the rest of us are doing here. And I think that now is the opportunity for the rest of the school committee, like Dawn raises his concerns, for us all to talk about it collectively. And if you have other concerns, then maybe we, you know, make an item on the agenda specifically for it, for us to discuss it when Matt's here, if we want a full group to talk about it. But I think that that, I mean, I don't know how the protocol works for the school committee or, you know, any other meetings I've been in. I mean, I think that this is the traditional protocol, is that we come and report back to the entire group. If you have concerns, now would be the time to address and raise those concerns. So I understand your point, Dawn, and I do, you know, respect everybody's opinion, but, you know, I think that the protocol has been, you know, kind of followed thus far.
Well, I was just having the impression based on what you said earlier, that this had to be submitted and, you know.
Yeah, and I apologize to that computer, no, it's not submitted, and we still have weeks.
The whole committee at that point, at this point. So I guess, is your intention to bring that back to the committee at the next meeting, or what?
I think it's gonna be distributed.
It'll be virtually, if you get it.
Or distributed virtually?
It's due July 30th.
Oh, yes.
So, to be frank, I told Mrs. Bartlett, like, I banged out the last paragraph of the complete draft yesterday before I hit the bar so far there. And I need my brain to get around it a little bit so I can look at the wordsmithing piece. But the concept, I think, you're very much able to talk about today. So I don't know how much, no offense, but I don't know that you need to do the wordsmithing part so much. I think you can have that conver, no offense again, not you, I just mean in general. You can have the conceptual conversation today, and this is your input, is what I would call it. Am I misspeaking?
Yeah, I mean, I think your question at the outset, you know, maybe was geared around, you know.
The process.
Yeah, the process, but what I would say is, I mean, as I understand, so in my time in the committee, I don't know if this committee has ever presented at any conferences before. To my knowledge, we have not, before I arrived on the committee. So, I mean, it, yeah, so I think in the protocol that I've followed in the three opportunities that we've had to do this, is I approach Patty. If Patty thinks it's a good idea and wants to move forward with it, then she really has the lead. And then through this type of venue, we have the opportunity to provide feedback or see what's, you know, going on. In the case of the Magna Award, there was a very quick turnaround, but everybody had insight into that application and everything, which was also driven by Patty. So to your point about her time and whether, you know, choices being made about where her time is best spent, I don't have an answer to that, because I sort of, the three times I've done it, she's left at the chance each time, so I don't know if that's good or bad. If I've taken her away from something else in order to do this, I don't know.
No, I just think, yeah, it's one of communication, making sure that the entire committee, whether the president of the meeting or not, are aware of what's going on and.
Has an, have an opportunity to see it, yeah. Okay. Well, I think Matt will have his opportunity virtually. He won't be able to do, since he's not here today. But, okay, well, thank you for the question, and thanks for, to the working group for taking a look at that. And is there any, are there any other, do you have anything from the collaborative? Have they met?
No, I don't have a reason.
Okay. We did have, the Mass Board of Directors had a meeting last Friday. I was on. I was on, uh, I was out of town, um, but there was a summer institute last weekend. Did anybody from here go? Brian, no? Okay. Um, I was just, I haven't gotten any debrief from that, so I was curious. Um, so I think that's it. Are there any other? Oh, the only other thing I was gonna say liaison wise is, um, I saw that the tribe had elected the two remaining tribal council members. Um, and we had discussed having our meeting, our joint meeting this fall. And being that it's already July, I think we should probably decide which meeting, um, we would like to try to do jointly with the tribal council. And I, I guess I would suggest that we look at October. Yeah, um, so maybe if you could follow up, um, with Gail and Roxanne and I guess Brian, um, to see if that's reasonable or come up with an alternative to that, but I'd just like to know that we, we have it set up. Okay. Um, anything else? Brian, do you have anything?
No.
Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, unfinished business. So on the, um, post Magna Award happenings, um, Patty put something in your packet here about the Donors Choose partnership program. So we did receive a five thousand dollar gift card for Donors Choose, which prompted us to investigate how we could use that money. Um, and we ha- had a great presentation by, um, someone from the organization. And I think I, and Ashley was there too, um, and I think I was most struck by, um, one, this opportunity to become a partner, um, which you guys got an email about today with our landing page and everything. And that's really just a, a free offering through Donors Choose that helps you kind of organize, um, and keep track of, um, your participation district wide in the program. But also what was really interesting is, and I wasn't aware of this, but, um, they said that in some years, you know, just having, uh, grant requests out, like, sometimes people will come in and make these investments and they'll fund everything that's on Donors Choose that, that year. Like some philanthropists will come in and say, I'm gonna fund every proposal out here. So it was really opened our eyes in terms of why we should be using this as a tool, um, in for like current year innovations, expenses, you know, just to potentially bring more money into the district. So that was one of the things that I was struck by. Um, and Patty went through the, um, setup and, and with a few other people from the, uh, leadership team to get us swear on that. So I think there's gonna be something either at convocation or at some future, um, PD to talk about Donors Choose and kind of how everyone in our district can take advantage of it. Did I forget anything?
No, we're just, we're in the process of sort of setting up the backend technologically as well. So Suzie and Sean are working on that piece. And I don't know if it'll be convocation or by building.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but, um, yeah, we're excited for these opportunities for our teachers.
And I think there's only one other district partner in Massachusetts, and I think it was Springfield. Um, so it might be fun to connect with them, um, and just hear how you, they're using it. You know, I love talking to other districts, so, um, that would be kind of fun.
One thing in case you are interested, it's not talking, but you can go to their website and, uh, and see what Springfield has had, uh, funded, so that's pretty cool.
Cool, I'm gonna go do that. Um, so any questions about that?
So, just clarify, can we, um, because I'm very shy for everybody a little bit, but the five thousand dollars goes towards like our membership with them? Or we apply that to other things in, like, how?
So basically, the, the way it works is, we have to spend the money on Donors Choose, but we can put our own project in there to use the gift card for.
So, okay, all right, so we can put our own project in and then use our money towards ourselves?
Exactly, yeah.
Got it.
And, uh, there have been some, uh, no one's made that determination of what that money is gonna be spent on, but, um, I, I think that's a decision for the administration and, you know, the leadership team.
Sure.
So, but, but that hasn't been decided yet. Um, there was talk about putting it towards our district equity priority and perhaps, you know, getting some PD for, uh, someone in the district that could, we could transfer, you know, use it sort of train the trainer model. Um, and so I think that's something that Patty's looking into.
Okay.
That's pretty cool. The, uh, other thing is just a reminder to the committee that we have our implicit bias, um, work with Dr. Kalise Warnum on Monday, um, from one to two thirty at the MMHS library, which if you haven't been in it recently, is so nice. I can't wait to see it and spend ninety minutes there. Um, we don't, did you hear from Gail about?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I'm not quite sure who's confirmed from the town, but I expect the town manager and his staff, as well as a few members of the board selectmen, hopefully all of them, but. Who knows? So, um, so we'll see. Uh, if I find out who that is, I'll send it out to you in terms of who's attending. Um, then our school committee retreat. Um, so it's, uh, we've sort of stretched the fun out over a couple of days. Um, and that's primarily to take advantage of Ruth, um, who helped with our development of our district strategic plan. So she, prior to the next school committee meeting, she's gonna be, um, walking us through sort of a priority setting exercise from the strategic plan in terms of adopting our, you know, the ones that we wanna focus on, um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, and then we anticipate as a result of that conversation being some potential, um, actions that we wanna, um, you know, work through. Or maybe we wanna set up different work groups or, you know, there might be some organizational changes. So that's what the second morning is for on the twelfth. Um, and, and I'm hopeful that everyone, I, I've heard from Matt that he cannot make the following morning, but that it doesn't, it's not like moving at a day or a week isn't even gonna help. Like he's just sort of overrun with work. So, um, he's asked us to, just, I can fill him in after that ninety minute session, um, and make sure that he's okay with those decisions. So any questions about that? All right, and, uh, I mentioned that our school committee meeting will happen on the eleventh as scheduled here. Oh my God, it'll be the last one of the summer. Why is that happening already? Okay, um, so new business, um, we're a little ahead of schedule. We have handbooks, um, so handbook updates.
So in your packet, you have, um, updates, just the things that have been sort of adjusted. Um, and so hopefully you had a chance to take a look. We're not going to go through them line by line, but this is the opportunity to ask any questions on any of the changes. There's also, um, I think it's page, uh, forty, well, it's forty-two all the way through forty-five, forty-six. Um, so if you have questions for the principals, they're either here or on Zoom and would be happy to answer them. But there's also a chart on page forty-eight that gives the Quashnet updates sort of in bullet form. The middle high school is on page fifty and it looks like KCC is forty-seven. So if that's easier, feel free to take a look. And then we would ask for a vote tonight, um, to approve the changes as presented.
I noticed something, uh, Deb, on, uh, page forty-seven, but just in reference to the school committee. I think we should just go with chair.
Um, so chair, like the person?
We'll make a chair every time, everywhere, so then it's really easy to, um, if you don't have a woman next time, or chairperson seems a little cumbersome, so, um, that was one suggestion I got. Um, do you guys have any questions for the principals on any of these changes?
So in regard to on page fifty, um, where it indicates that the language is under legal review, has that been concluded?
I'm looking for the searches.
This is for Mark.
It's page fifty?
On page fifty, I saw, I think I saw it asked where, where it was.
Uh, actually, it's not on page fifty.
It is on page fifty.
It's on page forty-nine.
Uh, page fifty has a number four.
Oh, language under review, okay. So, yeah, Mark, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so, um, so address code, uh, language is something that we're working on currently, uh, to be more inclusive and appropriate. Uh, so we have sent it out as a district to our local council and are awaiting a response regarding any, any, uh, language changes to that book. So I know those are gonna, I think, be presented at a later date, the August meeting, uh, once we receive that, uh, from the legal council. But the way, the way it is currently written in, in, I believe, all three schools' handbooks, it's very antiquated and, and not really, uh, appropriate for our current day.
So the language that we're looking at i- is what you've already revised and is under review by legal council?
The, no, the, the language in the handbook for dress code is, is as it was. And there was language that's district wide that will go in all three handbooks that is currently under review. And once, once we receive the feedback on that, it'll go into the handbooks.
We're not having you vote on the, the, that change because we don't have that information right now.
So what's in the packet is what's currently in the handbook?
Right.
Correct.
So we're gonna be voting only on the specific changes that are indicated, correct?
Correct.
Not anything that's under review.
So the three proposed changes are under review from other state offices?
I see page number forty.
Forty-fifty.
I see forty-six on forty-nine.
Okay.
And you said you saw two more?
No, I'm just looking at like pages forty in the packet, pages forty-two through what, forty-six? The three proposed changes, those are the ones under review?
The ones under review, um, are those, but then.
And then the additional ones.
The additional ones, yes.
Alright, so we're not loading on forty-two through?
You are.
Okay.
That's the parent student handbook that's going across, that's staying as it is. And those are the ones that are under review. Is that right, Mark? Is that what you're saying? Are you looking at the packet?
Yeah, I'm looking at the packet at my page, um, I'm on the last page of the packet here.
No, go, go to forty-two in the packet?
And that's what my question was.
Right, I get what you're saying.
Is this language on forty-two the revised?
And Mary Kate, if you can look at it too.
Oh, I see.
Is this the revised language or is this the original language? That's, that's what my question is.
And that's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that, so I'm hoping that Mark and Mary Kate do.
Cause I don't wanna go anything far.
This is the re- the revised for dress in personal appearance is the revised.
So we haven't gotten legal on that?
We have gotten confirmation.
Oh, we have?
Yes.
Okay.
But this one is district wide, not pertaining to the high school.
It will be in all three of our handbooks.
So then just do the summary pages that say we're waiting on legal review, are those incorrect? We have gotten the legal review since the packet went out?
We have.
Okay, that's what we needed confirmation on. That was Dawn's original question. So it looks like dress code is on page forty-two, dress in personal appearance, and that is information we got from legal and they said it's fine.
Yes.
And then student code of conduct?
That was also.
Was also vetted.
By legal council, okay.
And then searches, which, Mary Kate, you said you did get confirmation on searches.
We did get all three confirmed through our council, yes.
Okay, so then you are voting on those, and I apologize.
That's okay, I just wanted to clarify because it was a little, I was a little confused when I was looking at it earlier, so thank you.
You were not alone.
Can you tell me where, uh, in the searches policy, the section, the language regarding vehicles parked on campus was added?
Just scroll through it as you guys are with it.
Yeah, I think in the future, having a.
At the page that it's on, it's in the, in our handbook, it would be on page forty-five of our school handbook. Um, that's where that language would be added.
Can you read the sentence? It's not obvious to me in this section where, where we added those words.
Well, it's on page forty-five of the handbook, it's under, um, uh, the searches of students and their hair and carried belongings, lockers, desks, and or at, at the addition of vehicles parked on campus, um, shall be conducted by the principal.
Okay.
So vehicles conducted, any, any search that's done in school, uh, if contraband is found, any associated vehicle parked on campus is also, uh, under jurisdiction of the search. So that's just added in there as, to make sure that that language is, is appropriate and, um, and clearly articulated.
Okay, well, Nicole, I think it's not in the, the one you're looking at because those are for the district and there's only at the high school vehicles being added.
So, so again, forty, pages forty-two through forty-six are going in like the district wide handbook?
So it's KCC, uh, Quashnet.
Whereas that one is just gonna be the high school handbook.
Mm-hmm, okay, that's fine, but it just didn't make, I wanted to know where it was being added.
Didn't make sense to see it in both, I think, though, but.
And if you want, I think Sherry probably has a redline version of this, Mark?
She does, but it's, it's, it's right in the searches section of the handbook.
But we don't have that.
We don't have the handbook.
We only have.
That's not in the packet, alright.
No.
So they're not looking at it. So if you can send that to me tomorrow, like, Sherry can send it to me tomorrow, I can cut the pages out and send it over to you all so you can take a look, but that is where it is.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Brian.
Um, and it, I don't know how this process usually typically works, but it's, it's a little confusing considering there's the district handbook and then each, you know, schools, each, uh, you know, school facility has their own handbook. It sounds like the high school's handbook, um, was still waiting for that legal review and, you know, you have the concerns about, you know, looking at that. So is it easier for us to, um, just to vote on the district's handbook and come back to the high schools later? Or can we break it up? Do we have to do it in one vote? Can we simplify? I don't know if that's easier or if it's more confusing for everybody, but it sounds like there's a little bit of questions or concerns more so with maybe the high school handbook than the district handbook. And I don't feel comfortable voting on stuff that I, you know, personally don't see. I mean, even when people talk about edits and stuff, I just would like to see it and make sure we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's.
You mean, you don't have a packet?
No, I, I think what he's saying is.
No, I have a packet, I just don't have, you know, like Nicole's talking about the high school and some of that stuff that we're asking for.
Oh, the redline copy of it?
Yeah, yeah, all that.
So, yeah, typically we have done it this way with just the changes highlighted, but we can absolutely get it to you, no problem. It's just very unwieldy and a lot of paper, and I think that's why it's done this way. The, the changes tend to be small and they're always vetted through legal, and that's why we present it the way we do. But we can certainly, um, I mean, I think that the goal was to get the votes tonight so that we could start to prepare for the school year, cause our next meeting is mid-August, right? Oh, it's almost eleven, that's probably enough time, I would say. Don't you think?
Well, I think we can, I mean, we can take these however, and answer your question, Brian, we can take them however we like. We can approve, you know, uh, it, so on pages, page forty-seven of your packet, for example, shows you all the changes to the student handbook at KCC. So that you don't have to, we don't have to look at a thirty-five page handbook, um, as part of the packet. Um, and then the same is for forty-eight. I think where the confusion lies is in this reference to legal review. Um, and I, I, I'm so confused about that myself in terms of the high school handbook.
That's fine, we got the results of our legal review after the packet was created.
Okay.
But we can do it, like I said, I mean, however you wanna do it is totally fine. Um, I see.
I mean, I just think it would be easier if we just do, I mean, I see Kay, I see everybody's now, um, edits in the polls that all the principals have put in, but it seems like there's more questions, um, around maybe the high school one. So I don't have a problem with proceeding with Casey Coons and Quashnet tonight. And then if we wait for, um, Mark for the next, you know, August eleventh meeting or whatever that is, um, just to finalize that last one and make sure that those are included. I mean, he did just read the verbiage, um, that Nicole, the chairperson, asked for, um, but still just seeing it is just gonna be easier for me.
Does that work, Mark, for you? Can we do that? I just want to personally thank Mary Kate for dropping the, uh, perfect attendance recognition for students.
I second that.
Uh, it's always annoyed me, um, so, thank you.
You're welcome, it's also a Desi recommendation.
Oh, well, they finally caught up with me.
Except they're still using attendance as our accountability measure.
Yeah, exactly.
So please don't think attendance doesn't matter, because it absolutely does, but if your kid is sick, they should stay home.
Exactly, yeah. Let's see. I didn't, I don't really have any questions, um, I, I really like the, the table format best, but I just find it really easy to read. Um, so I remember, I was, when I was looking through the, I mean, there's nothing substantial at the KCC, but, um, in fact, given what we've looked at in previous years, this, these are not that many changes, so I'm really grateful. So I will entertain a motion, uh, unless, uh, Dawn, well, I guess we can have a motion and then have any further discussion if needed. You've been quiet, so I want to make sure you have a chance to weigh in.
Dawn, while you're thinking, why is that happening right now? One more thing on the searches. I just, I, I just want to make sure, like, with what the high school's saying, where, where that verbiage does seem very, um, specific, does it make sense to have that near in the district-wide one as well? Because I don't see vehicle, uh, I'm missing that in this district-wide part of.
Because only the middle high school kids have vehicles. And we're not searching up parents or staff members.
I just don't understand why, to Kathy's point, though, searches of students, their hand-carried belongings, lockers or desks, or vehicles on campus. So you're saying if we put that in there, some, a parent could interpret that to say that their vehicle?
No, I'm saying it's not needed in there because there are no vehicles of students in any building other than the middle high school, so it's not probable.
But I guess if it's district-wide, my thought is that it should be overarching and cover all three regardless.
It's not a district-wide manual, I'm sorry, that, there are components that you're looking at tonight that will go in all three.
That go in all three, okay.
But the handbooks are by building. So when we're saying district-wide, it's not that there's a manual, it's that we're using consistent language, and that's my fault, I didn't explain that clearly, so.
Yeah, no, and I. No, I vaguely remember that from, like, the council stuff, but it's, it's okay, that's why, I'm just clarifying.
No, but still, I should have explained. No, that makes perfect sense, if, if it's gonna apply to everything.
Didn't know things had changed, didn't know things had changed when there wasn't a district-wide handbook now, or if it was still just certain things.
No. No, it's still by building.
Go, went into all three, okay, alright.
So that's why I didn't understand what Brian was saying, but now I do. There is no district-wide handbook, Brian, it's by building with district-wide language that's consistent for certain things, so, sorry.
Thanks for the clarification.
I'm a sub.
Um, Madam Chair, there's no more questions, I make a motion, um, to approve the changes to the student handbook at Casey, Casey Coon School as presented.
Okay, um, so a motion for KCC, Dawn?
Oh, I will second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve the changes to the student handbook at the Kent Coon School, um, that is, uh, motion by Brian, second by Dawn, any discussion? Okay, Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Are we gonna do anything with the Quashnet book?
Sure, I motion that we approve the Quashnet School, uh, hand, student parent, uh, student handbook, um, as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Kathy's second, so motion to approve the Quashnet handbook by Brian, second by Kathy, any discussion?
What's the, um, rationale, uh, for the, um, removing phone extensions for counselors?
Well, any calls that come in.
And having that all routed, directed through, s- I guess, the, the central office?
They come through the central office, and the counselors often are not in classrooms, so if there was a need, I'd rather that come to the central office and then we would locate a counselor. Um, also, counselors will move locations, and I would not want someone trying to call that published extension when it's not really where that counselor is sitting. So, um, I think there's more flex, more efficiency to just call that main office and then we would make sure that counselor gets that phone call. The phone, front office is always manned, a counselor's extension is not. And especially in the sense of a threat assessment.
Ri- right. So I'm, I was a little confused because it sounded like initially you were talking about internal calls to reach the counselor, and then you ended it kind of with external calls to reach the counselor. So, I'm not, which one is it?
It would mostly be for outside calls, all of our counselors, um, during the school day, if it's an internal, all of the teachers have extensions and a whole phone list, so they're able to call, but our counselors do carry walkie-talkies, so if there was an emergency situation, the main office would facilitate reaching that counselor. It's the most effective and efficient way versus a phone extension. That's a landmine that doesn't move, where the counselors are often out and about lunch bunches on different locations through the day.
I don't see anything in here, um, to potentially try to address some of the, um, drop-off and pickup issues that have plagued, uh, Quashnet?
Everyone's gonna be on the bus this year, right?
Is that in the handbook?
Well, I, we did a real heavy sell of not taking the bus last fall, and I will take full responsibility for that because I was the bus czar, and we didn't have enough room, and people were great, and took us up and said, we want in-person learning, so okay, I'll drive my kid. Our expectation is that things will, we won't have limited seating on buses next year. Kids can take their bus like they always did, and our expectation is that families will do that. We started to see an uptick in the bus use as the school year went on, until the very end, and then parents start again because they're like, taking them places or whatever. Um, it's certainly something we will continue to look at, I know, um, through Ms. Lopes, we got a police detail for the end of the school year. Um, if we have to bring that to the committee again, we will, but I don't think it would go in the handbook so much. It's more operational in terms of, our best hope is that things will go back transportation-wise to the way that they have been, and go ahead, Mary Kate.
I am also hopeful that next year or this fall, we'll have our after-school programs, where we have really good participation. So that will also create a two-tier dismissal, which should make a difference. Um, so that is addressed in the handbook, that, that after-school dismissal versus the regular dismissal at the end of the day. That should make a difference. I also would anticipate, um, our boys and girls' club participation to be up as well as adventure club. And to give you an example, the year prior to COVID, we would send approximately seventy-five to eighty students over to the Boys and Girls Club. That's a lot of cars, who no longer, and then during COVID, we had about five. So that was a difference, and about seventy-five students, whether they made it to a bus or were parent-picked up and drop off, so, um, I'm optimistic for a very nice start to this fiscal year twenty twenty.
Well, and the first week is always, you know, so we're gonna give it a few weeks, but.
But it looks like you guys liked the, um, the live pickup, so you're not gonna make parents come up to the doors anymore for just regular after-school pickup?
Um, well, we have to split that, so the dismissal at three-thirty-five will be that live pickup, like we did last year. The late bus will have to be a park and sign-out, and the reason for that is I don't have the staffing at four-twenty. All of our paraprofessionals are gone, teachers are not here, so I don't have, I would not feel safe to be the only one out there with pickup. Um, and I don't think it's a safe situation for students, so that's why it will be a sign-out, just for those three days.
And that four-twenty time.
The, the four-twenty only, but I think overall, I know we were, there were a lot of cars, but we were processing about a hundred and twenty cars within fifteen minutes, so it was pretty quick, I think, as quick as we could do it.
I think it sounds like Matt Hanscom did not stop, he just rolled. And then Gabe Hanscom literally rolled out with his chiller.
You also got people down to the end, I noticed, you were getting people finally to the end of that sidewalk.
Yes. Come, keep it going.
Yes, but.
No, ju- yeah, you know, um, having sat in that line in various positions occasionally, um, it, it amazing that parents would be there an hour and a half before, um.
Yes, I agree.
You know, and, um, I know we don't want vehicles idling for long periods of time, but I know they're, they're definitely doing that, so anything that we can do to improve, um, the process.
Ride the bus.
No cars.
Alright, so I think we can, um, call for a vote then on the Quashnet handbook unless there's any questions, any additional discussion? Okay, uh, Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table the Mashpee Middle and High School handbook, um, to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. And is that the right language tabling?
Yeah, it's in the next meeting.
Okay, alright. So we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we have a, a motion by Brian and a second by Dawn, any discussion? Okay, so we're likely just gonna see an updated page fifty that just doesn't have number four on there, right?
Yeah, and we'll also give you the factual text as well.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, I think to, to the committee, generally you have a handbook in, at your table that you go through and you turn to the page, and, and the language is right there, if that didn't happen this year, my apologies. And these are very minimal changes to the handbook, these are simple phrases, uh, but we want to make sure that you added language in regarding hate speech, um, we used to have in there just, you know, provocative behavior, terminology, words, you know, things of that nature that fell under hate crime under federal law, so we want to be more specific. And then on the other ones, I was really just, uh, looking and working with our students this past string for their, um, six projects to provide more educational, uh, consequences with discipline, and that's really what the, the other piece is for adding that, just one piece that students may also be required to include in education programming and applicable institutions. So I, I apologize for any confusion, uh, these are very, very basic changes, um, in the searches, uh, section as well as it's just an addition of that one phrase to our policy, but I'll get all that to you guys as soon as possible.
Don't have to, uh, keep pointing out that I'm a sub, Mr. Bell's charging, and maybe I messed up a little, I'm sorry. I didn't know I was supposed to have the handbooks.
That's okay, um, that's great, thanks, Mark. Okay, so, uh, vote on tabling that to the next meeting, uh, Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so that's it for handbooks, um, other new business, we already talked about the annual conference, um, and so there's nothing more to say about that at this point, um. I am not aware of any other items, is there anything that anyone wants to raise? Oh, yes.
Um, I, Mrs. Hannon tested me back, um, and I have one, two, three, four, five, six town hall folks on the list who are attending.
How many from the board of selectmen?
I don't have any on the list that I received. That doesn't mean they're not coming, I'm just giving you the feedback that I received.
I'll reach out to the chair of the board of selectmen and make sure they are aware. Any public comment?
Uh, I did have a chat that, I, I did get a chat, the person's gone, that they still are having, I'm sorry, that they're still having trouble hearing. So we will have microphones always available if you do so desire. Um, I don't think we're always gonna have a Zoom option, to be honest, I feel like tonight was situational, um, so it might not be as much of an issue, but that was one piece of public comment.
Okay. Um, alright, so I think that dispenses with the agenda, so I'm, yes.
More or less. So, uh, I guess that's interesting, so, you know, we as a, you know, community historically have struggled to gather widespread, um, participation from the public, right? And unfortunately, our video is video, it's not live, so they can't participate, um, if they would want to, uh, because they wouldn't see the meeting already over. So are you, I don't know what's, are we going to be prohibited legally?
No, I, sorry, it was once the state of emergency ended and all of that with no masks, I, that was what I thought the group had sort of said, but we can definitely still do Zoom if that's what you want.
Well, maybe that's a, a conversation.
That's a good conversation to have, I think.
For the community to have, uh, with, with the next meeting, and so on.
I agree, maybe you should put on the agenda.
It could be the retreat, part of the retreat, even.
I think, I think, uh, discussing it as part of the retreat is probably a good idea, um.
I agree, because I think it probably, they're probably one of our goals, but I've kind of.
Yeah, I, I will say, just as a general comment, over the last year where we met remotely, it wasn't like we got a huge spike in public participation.
I think we got one or two.
Yeah, but, I mean, we occasionally get, we occasionally get one or two here, you know, so I, I just, I, I actually thought that more people would avail themselves of that opportunity, and I was kind of surprised that we didn't have a lot of, public comment, but I think, I think that's really just a testament to, you know, that things were going well.
You're all killing it.
Yeah, well, you are killing it, but.
We're all killing it.
Yeah. But, um, but yeah, it's, Patty mentioned that, and I think we were, we didn't have the, uh, we didn't need to address it tonight because Brian had to be remote, so, um, but there have been discussions, and I haven't been following it on the, um, message board with mask, the state association, about, uh, changes to the, uh, open meeting law that allow us to continue to do meetings this way, and I think a number of districts have expressed an interest in continuing, um, these types of virtual hybrid meetings, so.
Well, I, I mean, even before the pandemic, members could participate remotely, we didn't have Zoom and so.
Yeah, but they weren't allowed to, there was a voting thing, there was, and remember, because Jeff had to do some meetings remote, and he like, couldn't vote on things, or?
No, I think you as a committee, could have been before my time here, it might have been another place, you had to vote on whether you were gonna allow folks to participate remotely. And I don't know what the outcome of that was, it would be in our minutes, well, whenever that, but you were on the committee, because I, I think I was in the audience, it was one of my date nights.
As, as far as I recall, over my tenure, we, an individual was allowed to participate remotely, um, and vote on items, there was no restriction.
You know who we'll remember? Patty?
Oh.
Yes, of course she will.
But I think, yeah, the, I think law, you can telephonically participate, it's, like, I think legally, yes, it's already precedents there, but I think the Zoom, even though there was low participation, to your point, I agree with the equitability of it, and I think it gives more, like, access, but that's just me. They hoping that someday we're gonna have a full fifty-people Zoom, you know, and it's not because they're upset with us.
There you go. So, uh, let's just put it on the, the agenda for, uh, the next.
Are we never gonna be live again on Mashpee TV?
I don't, also would know that, but, um, I mean, there was something with the cable, cable.
We don't have a connection here to go live on Friday night.
I don't know, um, I know the superintendent had connected with the, with Bill, yay, and there was some issue with wiring, but I don't know exactly what it was.
Yeah, that was my understanding, we don't have that connection here to be able to do it, we.
So we got to go to town hall, right?
Town hall or the high school.
Yeah.
To be wired.
But it's definitely something.
Okay, well, let's, let's talk about it. Either at the retreat or the, I'll connect with Patty and we'll either put it on the next agenda or, or discussion after the retreat. Any other questions?
Motion we adjourn at seven PM?
I'll tell you what, I don't even need your motion, because we're done with the agenda. Thanks, Brian.